Never seen everyone so quiet, so I guess that means it's time to start. So at 7:00 PM, we're going to begin this regular meeting of the Rutherford Board of Education, December 1st, 2025, 7:00 PM. We'll ask everyone who can to please stand, face the flag for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You two are the first and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Whitford, please take role.
Ms. Bogosian.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Present.
Mr. Healy.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Present.
Mr. Mazone.
Here.
Dr. Racine.
Here.
Mr. Spraberry.
Here.
Dr. Alati.
Here.
Ms. Aiorio.
Here.
Yeah, of course.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Rutherford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place posted on the bulletin board outside the borough clerk's office, mailed to the Herald, South Bergenite, and the record newspapers, and filed with the borough clerk. Hard copies of the agenda are available in the meeting room, and the agenda is posted electronically on Friday before the meeting date on the district's website at www.rutherfordschools.org. Subsequent to the meeting, a video of the meeting will be uploaded to the district's website, www.rutherfordschools.org. The video link can be found by opening the Board of Education link and clicking on Public Meetings and then Videos. As the board members in your packets, there were two sets of minutes to approve, regular meeting and executive session of November 10th, 2025. Any questions or comments about those minutes? Hearing none, I'll ask Mr. Whitford to please enter those. All right, well, we're going to begin with a special presentation. Our beloved Mr. Dennis Mazone, after a decade of serving as Rutherford Board of Education trustee, is going to be moving on. So I'm going to say a few words and then open it up to board members if you'd like to say a few words, followed by Mr. Hurley. Want to start out by saying that, you know, I think everyone here would probably categorize you as a guardian angel of the Board of Education, someone who's been strategic, tireless. You've been vice president the entire time I have been on the board, not when I was not president, you were still the vice president, going to rub that in. You have accepted any and all board assignments, liaison assignments, and you've done a tremendous amount, and I know that the impact you've had has been monumental. I thought I would just share a few things that I've learned about Dennis in my time. We all bring our own lens and our own perspective. I bring the perspective, having worked as a collaborator, as president of the Board of Ed for a few years, with Mr. Mazone's vice president. So first off, back in 2015, you know, he and I ran for the same board seat and I lost, so we already started off on the wrong foot, and that was about 10 years ago. And then, after a year or two, when Kevin McLean stepped down as president and Mr. Mazone said, "Sergio, let's meet, I want to talk to you," he looked at me and I thought, I didn't know what he wanted to meet about, thought maybe best-case scenario, he would ask me to step into a vice president role, and he looked at me and said, "I can't do it." But at that moment, he told me something that I didn't fully recognize, which is, he said that I could be a real active collaborative vice president, like a real kind of right-hand person who's going to be right there with you. And over the past few years, I've seen exactly what that's looked like. I don't think you have any feathers, meaning that there are none to ruffle, because I have never seen you lose your cool. I would say the two of us have worked together as president and vice president, kind of like peanut butter and jelly, although I don't like peanut butter, so I'll call you cream cheese. But you've been an incredible sounding board in so many ways, and I have humor envy. I like to think that I, you know, I have that like normal sense of humor. Dennis has the cut-through tension, self-deprecating humor, in any moment in time, just knows how to cut the tension in a room. For those of you who are friends with Dennis and will continue to be so, as I'm sure all of us, you may never have to experience what I did kind of regularly, which is the fact that he loves 6:00 AM calls. No one likes a 6:00 AM call the way Mr. Mazone, and my favorite quote when he would start a call, when my heart would start racing, is, "So Sergio, listen, I have no doubt that you've got this covered." And then I just knew something was coming. But in all that, it was all about, you know, eyes wide open, collaborating, being in sync. And I've never shared a leadership role in a way where I've seen such strategy, integrity, respect, listening. So I want to thank you, Dennis, for your professional acumen, your friendship, modeling the type of leadership traits that I think this board espouses what makes us really successful, and you're going to be greatly missed, and want to wish you the best in your new adventure on the Rutherford Council. And with that, just want to say a heartfelt thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So I'll open it up to any board members who would like to share anything. Mr. Spraberry?
Well, from the two outsiders, you know, that you've got to thank to partner with Mr. Mazone, show us the ropes. You know, for those that don't know, I hate public speaking. I fear the cabs of oil, and the night of Canada's night, we're in here, I'm over there dancing, I'm out, I'm not going to talk about this. And then he's like, "Just sit next to me, you'll be calm, you'll be fine." And then somebody started calling like Gatorade in the program, "Gatorade," or something. He said, "City, just don't talk about Gatorade, you'll be fine." But, you know, so the two campaigns we ran and stuff, it was just, it's always a blessing getting around you, always just great attitude, great energy, you know. And then you join two young kids, the ropes. So I really appreciate you, and just go and work with me. Thank you, thank you very much.
Ms. Jones?
It goes way back when I first met Dennis, and that was in the library. He was good friends with Jane because he was working with her husband at the time, and that was Homeland Security?
Division of Criminal Justice.
Okay. So I got to know him then, and then he introduced me to his wife, and then his children came into the library as little kids, and they were very entertaining and very good, and I had just admired him. And when it came down to the board thing, interviewing for that, not only did you do well, but everybody liked it that you knew safety. And they thought, "Well, you know, in this day and age, that is something." That's probably the only reason why we picked him over you, Sergio. But he knew it, and he knew it well. I will really, really miss you. It's our loss, I'm glad the council is getting you, but it is our loss. You have been a wonderful, wonderful board member.
Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
Yeah, I mean, knowing Dennis last 10 years, certainly you have to appreciate his dedication, and certainly you made an impact on the students in Rutherford, Rutherford District. And, you know, your leadership dedication and your competence makes you an excellent choice now to move on to our town council, and we wish you all the best, and we'll see you around town, my friend.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Conti?
You know, I'm happy that you got a new gig. I'm disappointed that it's not with us, though. I just want to say that it's been a pleasure to serve with you, and it's been a, I feel blessed to be able to say that you're my friend, and I have to say that it's been, probably my biggest takeaway has been you're such an inspiration as to what it means to be a board member, and how to be a board member and interact with the community and with our teachers and with our administrators. You know, lead by example, and the example that you set was phenomenal. And certainly, you know, as James said, you showed us the ropes, and I was always impressed by, no matter what we were talking about or debating, you always had a measured approach, which I really appreciate, which I came to appreciate the more involved I got. So I thank you for that, for being an inspiration and showing us, like James said, showing us the ropes. Although I'm sad for us, I'm happy for the town, so thank you for everything.
And once in a while, my measured approach was a result of having had a conversation with Dennis before.
I'm telling you.
I know it can feel repetitive, but if anyone else wants to say anything, right, Mr. Bogosian?
I'm going to give one outside example here. So I actually met Dennis, I think, for the first time when he picked up a family member who will not be named off the street corner after passing out at the Labor Day Street Fair when he was riding the bus. And I think that that day showed me exactly who he was. His, again, calm, measured approach brought everyone back into reality at that time, and, you know, the last five years working with you on the board has been an absolute pleasure, and I wish you the best in your next role.
I appreciate that sincerely.
Whoever's the next vice president's going to have to live up to his snap, he's his snappy dresser, so.
Everyone brings their own plaid shirts. Dr. Racine?
So I'm trying to think of a story I can tell. I really couldn't come up with too many that I could tell in public. But you're going to be missed. It's great having you as that voice of sanity during a lot of our negotiations, during these heavy meetings where you're like, you're kept calm, saying like, "Wait, I'm just going to go this way." It's good to have that. Could I miss that? Could I miss giving you rights at a board meeting when you're like, "Hey, I'm late on the bus, I'm coming through the tunnel now, can you get?" Or for today, but you were already early.
I've done it a long time.
Yeah, I've known you before the board, I've known you after the board.
I just want to say, Dennis, good luck on the council. We're going to miss you dearly, and I'm just so glad I was able to share the stage during graduation to wish our boys off on their next journey, so.
Absolutely.
You're very fair, very level-headed, and I think that is something that the council needs at this time, so I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Turn it over to you, Mr. Healy.
Well, you know, everything that everyone said, I'm not going to repeat.
You said you wanted to go last.
I know. Because for once, I didn't want to steal everybody else's words.
Thank you.
But it's 100% true. And on behalf, you know, of the administrators and the supervisors and the teachers and the staff and the students, you know, I think, I've said this many, many times, what, part of what makes this a special place, a big part of it, is the way the board functions. And, you know, everything that everybody's said about you is key to that functioning. Reflective, calm, measured, knowing the role of the board member, all those things that you epitomized. And I do think, you know, the leadership of the board is a very important thing because, you know, we've had, you know, in what used to be, right, Diane, 10 years, what's 10 years, right, on the board, I mean, you've been here a quarter of a century, right? But you look at, look around the room, how many people here are less than 10 years? And it's the leadership, you know, of board members who show the others the way, and you've been a big part of that. And on a personal note, you've, every time, you know, I'm glad you don't call me at 6:00 in the morning, but, you know, when we've spoken, whether via text or email or person, it's always been the kind of conversation that was looking to go forward together in a way that was going to mitigate any problems, going to make the next step better, and I appreciate that. So thank you for all you've done for the district and for all of us and for me, and you will be missed, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Can I go on to the next part? Do you want to? Okay, great, excellent.
I could say something if you'd like, but whatever that's.
What do you think? Yeah, what do you have to say? Let's hear it. You don't have to, I'm just kidding. Please.
I just want to thank you all sincerely. I come here very humbly, right? One of my rules in life is if I'm having fun, I keep on coming back. And when I walked into this room and I looked around, and Greg, you were here, Diane, you were here, certainly Jack, you were, and, but when I saw the other board members, I saw friends, I saw people that were involved in scouts and rec sports with me. So it gave me a sense of confidence that I could be here and, you know, help support our students, our district, the administrators, that's what brought me here. What kept me here was the work in each of you. I've learned something from every one of you who have given something to me. Negotiations, I learned so much. Jack, I think what you've said I've borrowed professionally as well as personally. Sergio, your greatest good for the greatest number is something I'm going to take from the board and bring to the council, because I think it's really an important way to govern. I truly believe in servant leadership, and I think the board illustrates that, right? So thank you. My thanks to the district, to the administrators. I got two kids through district, one to go. I couldn't have been prouder to stand up there with Mrs. Cole to hand out diplomas to our children, I mean, that's the big honor of this, but the work that's done here, I know the audience is a little overwhelming tonight, you know, but, you know, when there's an issue, they're here. And, yeah, so it's been a great time. I can't believe it's been nearly 10 years, and to this day, Sergio, I can't honestly believe they picked me over you. Just, I'm going on record.
So I was at a professional development the other day, and a lot of organizations, companies, schools talk about this idea of belonging, like, you know, I'm a part of something that's really special, and psychology also introduces the concept of mattering, you know, that what I'm doing makes a difference, and like what you have done will really make a difference, and I know that everyone here really speaks from the heart, and you are truly uniquely superb at what you do, and you have had a great impact, so. On behalf of the board, we have a couple of gifts for you. The first one is a traditional gift that's given to board members when they depart, so. And the second one is from all of us, a little more personal for you to celebrate, either alone or with Jen or whoever you choose.
That's trouble.
Alone, thank you. Thank God, I'm sorry. All right. Let him talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, if you need to go home and do some homework, you know, just kidding. All right, we're going to turn it over to the report of the student representative, Sarah Aiorio. Over to you.
Good evening. I hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving. It's hard to believe we're already in December, this year is going by so quickly. The National Honor Society won the annual Spelling Bee in a close competition against Beckton last week, bringing the trophy back to Rutherford. The FCC LA Fall Leadership Conference also took place last week, where many RHS students earned medals for the projects they created, which highlight family, career, and community leadership. They also attended different team-building workshops and heard from guest speakers at the event. The Sports Booster Dinner is this Tuesday at the Fiesta, where the fall sports teams will have the chance to celebrate all their hard work this season, and additionally, the winter sports teams have just started practicing to get ready for the upcoming season. The winter concert is coming up, where the choir and band will be performing. This is always a great night, as there are so many talented musicians in our school. Student Council and Pub Club will be selling holiday grams throughout the month to raise some money and bring holiday spirit to RHS. Members of the Future Business Leaders of America will be competing in the regional competition this week, which consists of an online test in a certain category, such as business communications or accounting, and the top winners from each event will have the chance to move on to the state round in the spring. The Future Business Leaders and Future Teachers Clubs will also be participating in the annual Bear Drive, where we will be collecting and wrapping teddy bears to donate to a preschool in Jersey City. This is always one of the best events of the year, as it gives RHS students a chance to give back while also spending the morning interacting with the kids. And the National Honor Society is making boxes and collecting boxes of kindness, which will be delivering to some schools in Newark this month as well. The boxes will include some basic necessities as well as some fun items for the kids to enjoy, and this event is another great way to give back around the holidays and something students always look forward to. So that's all I have for tonight. Have a happy holiday season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Aiorio? No? All right, well, best wishes to you for happy holidays as well. Thank you so much for all of your reports and everything you do. Look forward to seeing you in 2026.
Are there college applications in?
Yes, most of them.
How many? Did you apply?
Um, I have 11.
At $50 a shot?
Yeah, some of them.
Good for you.
All right, well, thank you. You can feel free to stay if you need to handle other things this evening, homework and whatnot, we understand. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Sarah.
Good evening.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hurley for the report of the superintendent.
You know, her report touched upon community service, and there really is so much of it going on. I'd asked the administrators if they could just keep me up to date on things they're doing, and the high school sent me a document, it was four pages, of things they're doing in terms of disabled adults, with disabled kids, with senior citizens, with different communities, the different drives. You know, I'm sure Mrs. Jones will mention the Thanksgiving parade at Washington, but what often goes unnoticed is that the parents and the kids bring in a food donation, and so all that then goes to the food pantry. Pierpont's doing one for the food pantry. All the buildings have something going on holiday time, so really, we have a lot to be proud of, and we talk about, you know, that civic responsibility is one of the pillars of the profile, and, you know, our kids really demonstrate that. Coming up, I sent you some updates on dates of things coming up in, you know, concerts and things like that. A reminder that we do have a one-session day on December 23rd, and the district's closed for the holiday break, then reopening on January 5th, which is a Monday. Also, that's the one time that the board office is closed now as well. So a reminder that we'll be sending on the 22nd, the package for the next board meeting, the reorg meeting. And as we've done in the past, you know, we follow the election of the board president, board vice president, swearing-in of new board members, both the incumbents who are reelected and the new member, and then after we go over the reorganization business, we will have some business to get done as well. I'm sure Dr. Alati's going to touch upon this, but I did as well. Committee assignments will be forthcoming. Finance committee will be meeting on January 12th, so, you know, we will be talking about that committee and get that out as quickly as we can. Generally speaking, if we can keep the finance committee as it is, we usually do, because it does have to get going pretty quickly in the upcoming year. And in terms of, you know, things that are happening throughout the district, it's been a very great, successful opening of school year in so many, many ways. It's hard to believe we're already pushing now, you know, second quarter and well into it, but the kids have been doing a great job, the faculty and staff have been doing a good job, and, you know, we just want to keep that going in the right direction. And I thank you again for all your support, as, you know, what we said about Mr. Mazone tonight is true of him, is true of the entire board, really helps us going in the right direction, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from Mr. Hurley? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to the report of the president. Like Mr. Hurley said, thank you to all the current board members for filling out that Google form, thank you, Mr. Bogosian, for setting that up for board assignment preferences. So it's something that, you know, as current board president, I like to look at, and then on January 5th, at the reorg meeting, everyone votes in a president and vice president, at that time, the leadership will work to finalize all the assignments, which will be presented at the January 26 meeting. Other thing I wanted to mention, it is that time of year where we start to work on the... Anyone? Can't say it?
I'm cheating, because I know the answer.
Board of Education self-evaluation. So we're going to make that available this week. We're going to use the same format that we've used in the past with the Google form. We'll have it due by January 5th. Does that work for everyone? All right, so, yeah, that'll be due by January 5th, and then we'll go over it at the January 26 meeting. That is it for my report. Any questions? Hearing none. At 7:24 PM, we're going to open the meeting to the public for anything related to the agenda this evening. Seeing no comments, we're going to close the meeting at 7:24 PM, and we are going to move on to new business with action to be taken, and we will start with personnel. Mrs. Cole?
Good evening. Personnel did meet this month, and we have 18 motions to be put forward tonight at the recommendation of the superintendent. I'm going to make a motion to move numbers 1 through 18.
All right, and Mr. Conti, seconding?
Yep.
Excellent. Discussion, questions or comments about these?
Just want to congratulate and thank Mrs. Foye, a teacher at Pierpont School, and Mr. Janiselli, Mark Janiselli, our district electrician, on their impending retirements. Mrs. Foye will be at the end of the year, and Mark will be in February 1st, so thank them and wish them well.
I just have to say, both my kids had, Miss Foye, wonderful teacher. I will just say, I was reading this at home, both my kids happened to be home, and I looked at it and I said out loud, all I said was, "Miss Foye!" And they're like, "What happened?" So just showed the love they have. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to comment on number eight for the coaching assignment, because I just want to say it's good to see two of those names, especially for lacrosse, Justin Trelongo and Chris Griffin, who were the two founders of the Rutherford Lacrosse Association, when that started, you know, 10-plus years ago, and I think they're really going to bring a lot to our high school program, and they've been contributing to this town as a feeder program for years and years, and I think this is a move in a really great direction for the future of Rutherford Lacrosse, both the girls' and the boys' team.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll ask Mr. Whitford to please take role.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes, on 1 through 12, abstaining on 13, and yes on 14 through 18.
Noted. Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. We'll move on now to curriculum and instruction. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. We did have a CNI meeting last week, last Monday, and tonight there are six resolutions recommended by the superintendent.
All right.
Four or six.
All right, excellent. Do we have a second? Mr. Spraberry? Questions or comments? Nothing stood out when I looked at everything, calendar looked good. All right, then, Mr. Whitford, please take role.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
All right, we're going to move on now to finance. Mr. Bogosian?
Good evening. We did not have a finance committee meeting since our last full board meeting. Tonight on the agenda, we have four motions to consider. I'd like to move motions 1 through 4 under finance.
All right, we have a second. Mrs. Cole? Questions, comments from board members? All right, hearing none, Mr. Whitford, please take role.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
All right, thank you. We'll move on now to policy. Mr. Healy?
Yes, we did not have a face-to-face meeting this month, but we did correspond regarding the proposed resolution for tonight, and there's one resolution as a first reading with two revised policies, two revised regulations, one new policy, one new regulation, as listed on the addendum to the agenda. So I'd like to put forth that one resolution.
All right, do we have a second on that one? Mr. Mazone? All right, questions or comments? Want to thank Mr. Healy, as usual, for his diligence. These are the least amount of comments you've ever made on a set of policies, but we only had three.
At least clear.
There you go. All right, Mr. Whitford, please take role.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?[1799.44]
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Lottie?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
You know, Dennis, I meant that as a compliment, right? Okay. We're going to move on to building grounds. Mr. Spraberry?
Good evening. We did not have a building and ground committee. We have one motion to put forth that we're going to make on the superintendent for Pandora's money back from the events at Union and Lincoln School. I'd like to put that motion forth for.
All right. We have a second. Mr. Bogosian. Discussion, questions, comments? Nope. All right. Hearing none. Mr. Whitford, please take role.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Lottie?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on now to old business. Ms. Jones, and then Mr. Healy?
I got to attend the play, the high school play, The Importance of Being Earnest. It was wonderful. A happy and funny performance. The cast was, well, a lot of seniors, but there were younger ones. Charlotte Ursalisi is a sophomore, and she is outstanding. Anyway, it was, it was a wonderful performance, and there were many senior citizens there. I liked going to that performance, because then I congratulate everybody after it. It was fun. It was, it was a wonderful one. I did go to the Thanksgiving parade. That was usual. It was wonderful. The kids make, have wagons, and they make floats. This is a tribute to Betty Ursalisi. That's Brian's mom. She was a second grade teacher for many years at Washington School. Her kids, my kids didn't have her. She wasn't teaching at that point. But I knew her through the library. We were on the Friends of the Library Board, and unfortunately, we lost her. But she is an absolutely fabulous lady, and I am so happy that they continue this honor, you know, for her. And the Thanksgiving parade for the town was this week, was Saturday. I used your parking space. Thank you, sir. And I read stories to little kids. It's a fun thing for me to do, so it went well.
Nice. Thank you. Mr. Early?
I attended the New Jersey School Board Association Delegate Assembly on Saturday, November 22nd. I distributed, actually, just a web address to the New Jersey School Board Association site, with its notes about the whole meeting. And you have to log on, I believe, to get into it. But one note to mention there, someone you may know, Mike Jacobs was elected as president.
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
And he's from Richfield, Bergen County. So he's the new New Jersey School Board Association president for the next year.
He's been Bergen County president.
Yeah.
It's wonderful.
That's great. Thank you. I attended the RAF Casino Night. Mr. Early was in attendance. And it was great. The venue was great. Whoever chaired the event was very well organized, so congratulations to her. And I think it was a really successful night. It was at West Mount Country Club. Couldn't have beat the location. So every year seems to keep getting better and better. So congratulations to the RAF. Other old business. Seeing none. Legislative update. Ms. Jones?
Yes. This one bill, Senate Bill 4710. It is, it requires a mental health test to be given to all school bus drivers. The, the text requires more testing, alcohol, and so forth. But that, I just thought that it was always done in the past anyway. But that's the bill for tonight.
All right. Thank you. At 7:34 PM, we're going to open the meeting up to the public for anything related to or not related to the agenda. Seeing nothing, we're going to close the meeting at 7:35 PM. And as a gift to Dennis Mazone, and as a holiday good wish to everyone, there is not a need for an executive session, which means that we can have a motion to adjourn. All right, Mr. Mazone has motioned to adjourn. Mr. Healy, in rare form, Dennis and Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, everybody.